City of Stevens Point Common Council Meeting, recorded October 21st, 2019.
At 7 o'clock, I will call the regular Common Council meeting to order. Clerk, could we get a roll call, please?
Jennings.
Here.
Shore.
Here.
Nabel is excused. Zerazua.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Slawinski.
Here.
Niebone.
Here.
Dugan.
Here.
Dalton.
Here.
Phillips.
Here.
Morrow.
Here.
Ten present.
We do have a quorum. Would you join me for our salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With liberty and justice for all. For all. There are a few people that I talked to this week that need to be reminded of that. The things that set people off just never cease to amaze me. So hopefully, as we progress, everybody can remember that. I wanted to talk a little bit about something that we've been working on for a while at City Hall in regards to how we handle different types of emergencies. We've had a couple. We have snowy emergencies and this year has been record-setting rain. I don't know that there's been three dry days in a row for that, so there's all sorts of things that come up. We have not had an official emergency manager in the city since Director Schott Snyder left. And arguably, the emergency manager should not be someone who is very likely to be called up in the event of an emergency, right? They have other things to do. So it shouldn't be our Public Works Director. It probably shouldn't be anyone at the Police and Fire Department. It probably shouldn't be anyone at the Public Utilities. And arguably, Parks could be called up for equipment and things like that, too. Since that time, I have been taking on those duties and getting by. It is definitely not ideal. I should not have those duties under me. My role in this is to allocate resources and sign off paperwork. I have some emergency management training, but nowhere near where it should be. So we've been tossing around the idea of what we can do and had Springstead do an evaluation based on the job description and they gave us a rough estimate on what we would be able to compensate someone, should compensate someone, for those additional duties. We presented it, but we really didn't have any takers at that. Contacted the Sheriff's Office, who is currently responsible for county emergency management, and their staff is busy. There's no one sitting around doing nothing. So he had estimated that they would likely need a new position to take on the duties contractually from the city emergency management standpoint. And let me say this first and foremost: Your staff knows what they're doing. There was never a moment where I thought that we needed something to coordinate. They communicate very well together. They allocate resources very well together and work together very well, in addition to working with the other municipalities. So those are the things we've been working on. Could there be room for improvement? Always. We have automatic notices that go out through our radio station, 105.9. There are still people I talked to that don't know we have a radio station, and that's typically where we would have our emergency notices. We post them on the website if we have things, but some people without power may not have Internet. So we are still working on options to make sure that everyone is safe in the city. At no point, again, I want to clarify this, no point was anyone at risk because we don't have an emergency manager. Everything is working very well, but we need to start figuring out what we can do to handle the emergency management section of our city. So just know that we're working on that and we will continue to work on that until we find a reasonable solution, and then we'll work on improving that. Item number three: Persons who wish to address the mayor and council on a specific agenda item other than a public hearing must register their request at this time. Those who wish to address the common council during a public hearing are not required to identify themselves until the public hearing is declared open by me. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on any of our agenda items that has not filled out one of these white slips? Okay, then we will move on to item number four, which is persons who wish to address the mayor and council for up to three minutes regarding a non-agenda item. And we have, first of all, boy, you know, and I'm usually pretty good with this, Danny Worhouski. Is it close? Come up to the lectern, please. State your name and address, and you will have three minutes, sir.
Hi, my name's Danny Worhouski, 200A Washington Avenue, Stevens Point. I'm the board chair of the Stevens Point Area Cooperative. I'm also a member of Rising Sand Organics Cooperative Farm, as well as the cooperative board member of our chapter of the Wood Portage-Wapaka County Farmers Union. I'm before you this evening in recognition of National Cooperative Month, which is this October, to share my perspective on the state of cooperative development in the Stevens Point area and to urge you to consider how your policy decisions impact the cooperative business development and equitable prosperity for our city's residents. The state of Wisconsin has a long history of cooperative businesses and organizing in part of our agriculture resources. Cooperatives can most simply be identified by their incorporation under Chapter 185 of the state statutes, the adherence to democratic control, the principle of one member, one vote, and the system that those utilizing its services or products have ownership and control of their businesses. The cooperative structure is powerful for community members and entrepreneurs who lack capital resources to pool them together in order to have access to better opportunities. There has been a resurgence in cooperative developments as baby boomer small business owners who are seeking to retire look to transfer the ownership of their businesses and a generation of entrepreneurs emerges post-recession looking for a way to own a business that is resilient despite their few resources. And for those looking for intergenerational affordable housing opportunities, the structure creates an opportunity to build equity in a home which you have been otherwise unthinkable. In Stevens Point alone, there are eight registered cooperatives, two of which have incorporated in the past two years, and there are at least two into the development phases currently. As you look to the future of how our community can have a resilient and robust economy, I implore you to consider how Stevens Point can promote and develop cooperative ownership. Cooperatives can build financial equity, bringing prosperity to residents. They can foster democratic participation and deepen understanding of democratic principles within and outside the workplace, even into local government. As leaders transition, we need to ensure there is a new leadership willing and ready to oversee our community governments and institutions. Finally, cooperatives can strengthen bonds across all demographics. Member owners of worker cooperatives have stronger ties to the community. If you are interested in learning more about cooperatives and observing or participating in the process of developing cooperative, I would encourage you to attend the Cooperative Conference, which is taking place Friday, November 1st, and Saturday, November 2nd, at the Idea Center, the Portage County Annex, and at Central River Farm Shed throughout the downtown area. There will be current and future cooperative leaders from all over Wisconsin and the Midwest developing their own cooperative business ideas and deepening their understanding of the cooperative principles. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Great, thank you. Next up, let's give the clerk a moment to reset the timer. Mary Meyer.
Mary Meyer, 1450 Water Street, Stevens Point. Thank you for allowing me to address you tonight and to share some more thoughts that I hope will help you ultimately decide to continue to support Edgewater and to take off the table any option to redevelop the site for any other use. Edgewater is a service to the whole community. It already exists and is working well. What I'm asking you is to please create the leanest facade solution plan for bidding and put it in the works so that it can be acted on in a reasonable time. I'm so grateful for the city, to the city, for not accepting that one high bid that came in for a new facade. That would have defeated the whole purpose for which citizens worked for the $1.5 million loan that the council approved. With that high plan, Edgewater's debt service would have been more than Edgewater can easily afford to pay without raising the rents above an affordable level. A person with a housing choice voucher cannot move into any apartment where he or she would have to pay more than 40% of his or her income. The $1.5 million loan was to go toward replacement or repair of Edgewater's facade, as well as toward a little other work. Edgewater doesn't need what Edgewater can't afford, so please put out a bid specifically for an inexpensive but adequate replacement or permanent repair that can be done for, say, a million dollars to one and a quarter million dollars, but not more. Edgewater residents have been letting me know how vitally important it is to them that Edgewater stay affordable. Thank you for city ownership of Edgewater. A private owner would be more likely to eventually sell Edgewater for some other use, raise the rents too high, or go bankrupt. It's because of these unknowns that the city has consistently voted to keep Edgewater city-owned. Thank you for planning for new affordable senior apartments across the street. The new building won't eliminate the need for Edgewater. With all the baby boomer seniors, there is more than enough need for both facilities. The two buildings will complement each other. Those with, those area seniors who put a top priority on a newer looking apartment or the latest handicap accessibility features will want to live in the new place. Many other seniors don't need those things, but instead benefit or will benefit from the unique opportunities for sociability and enjoyment of nature that Edgewater provides. Residents have been giving me a lot of input about how essential to their well-being are the community room with its kitchen and the common areas on every floor. They consider themselves a family, and the ability to gather and socialize fosters the sense of community that they need so much. They've already had their Halloween potluck. They play bingo and work jigsaw puzzles together. Just the other day, I counted nine seniors sitting around in a circle in the first-floor common area visiting together. The seniors have also been telling me how hard it would be for them to enjoy the riverside if they had to cross the street. They've stated how busy Water Street can be, and they find it very difficult to cross it. They're afraid of the added risk of falling, any time of year, but especially in the winter. Many seniors are urine incontinent and need a bathroom as handy as Edgewater's is. The seniors make regular use of the lovely riverside courtyard. Some fish, some fish regularly off the water deck. I see some seniors getting exercise with their walkers, walking just a little ways back and forth on the river path in Edgewater's backyard. I see a husband and wife regularly make their way ever so slowly.
Mary, if you could please wrap it up.
I got just a little itty-bitty paragraph left. They make their way ever so slowly out to the water deck to sit together. Lately, he's been pushing her there in a wheelchair. I know that you all want what's best for the city and that you want what's best for the city as a whole. Remember, the city gets monies from Edgewater called in lieu of taxes. Beyond that, one thing that's good for the city as a whole is to continue to be an age-friendly community, one that is a great place to grow up and to grow old. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mary. Next up, we have Bob Gifford from the wonderful village of Park Ridge.
Hi, Bob Gifford, representing County Board, District 10, which about one-third of the households are pointers. So this is about my household economic stress survey for District 10. Evidence-based policymaking is a term you hear a lot today in government. It means simply applying the scientific method, gathering evidence on a hypothesis or proposal to government and organizational governance. This is the opposite of ideology-based policymaking. Okay. We hear almost constantly that the U.S. economy is the best it can be. Unemployment rates are the lowest ever, and this is repeated in media constantly, and begins to steer public policy away from crisis-level problems facing our low-income people. In reality, however, there are crises of homelessness throughout the USA, an ongoing hunger problem in our county and statewide. Food pantries are reporting the same level of demand they've had since the Great Recession started. We have a crisis of healthcare costs, which are reducing our low-income people's overall health. We have a severe shortage of public transportation throughout Wisconsin, which immobilizes people who are aging out on disability, on too low an income to afford a car, and young students trying to get around maybe to their first job. So in the next two months, I'll be doing a survey, hopefully of all my county board District 10 households, on economic stress oars which their household may be experiencing. The questions on this are very familiar. They come from CAP Services and United Way. The main difference is that in this survey, I'm asking people to reply with their stories about how stresses are impacting them and get active on issues. This is evidence gathering for policy change. The purpose for doing it is to get people engaged and active on low-income people's issues. Too often, we have these future vision-type exercises throughout the area that involve a lot of professional people getting together to talk about low-income people and their problems and discuss solutions, rather than speaking to low-income people. So I'll be searching for people who want to participate directly in area meetings, perhaps a low-income council, task forces, vision sessions, to bring these issues forward. And we'll need to get organized, develop a list of demands, and then take those demands and bring it to the Capitol in Madison. And that, the way that the Packers have been bringing it the last seven games. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gifford. That exhausts our non-agenda item speakers, which brings us to item number five, which is a presentation to the mayor and council by Todd Kucan, who's the executive director of the Portage County Business Council, giving us an update on the Portage County Business Council. Could I get someone, because we need Todd at the lectern, could I get someone to volunteer to maybe click through his slides for him? Parks guy's always there, huh? Thank you very much. Todd, you just have to give him the nod. We needed a slide advanced.
All right, thank you very much. Just a couple of things in regards to the folks that made comments. First of all, just had a meeting last week with Gamber Johnson, and there's a, along with CAP Services and the city's public transportation, there's a different, central transportation. And we were talking about a getting-to-work program that they do in Dodge County. It's a rideshare program that is responsibility of the business and the individual has to pay a dollar a day, but trying to look at some ways to get folks who, where transportation is an obstacle, try to help them get to be employable, because if we can take that obstacle away, it's going to help a lot of people. So just a small side note, and the woman who talked about the, I have a, about the Edgewater, I have a mom and dad who are in independent living now, not at the Edgewater, but, and you know, just what she talked about, and you guys have so many issues to deal with in the city regarding all those, you know, transportation. And then the gentleman who talked about co-ops and, you know, the economic impact of co-ops and what they do in the community. So it's kind of interesting how all these things get intertwined, and it's sometimes hard to separate them. I want to thank the city council in the city for the support you've given to the Portage County Business Council. I don't know how many years this has been going on. I've been there four and a half years, and I know it's been going on at least that long, and I'm sure before that, but we certainly appreciate that support from the city council. So I want to give you, give you kind of an update today. The first slide, go ahead, is, I'm not going to even leave it up there long enough to read, but there's different definitions for what economic development is and isn't, so I'm going to try to give you what our definition is. I gave a copy to Paul. If you want a copy of this slide presentation, just shoot me an email. I'd be happy to get it to you. But the definition is really grown in terms of economic development. Go to the next one, please. And another thing I know that's come up with the City Finance Committee is having a contractual agreement with the Business Council and the city in terms of what responsibilities we have to use that money. So this is a draft we have, and this is something, I'm not sure where it fits in the meeting tonight or down the road or wherever, but we're more than willing to come up with an agreement that we can work through so that we can show you at the end of the calendar year, this is what we have or haven't done, and this is why we have or haven't done it. We've done it with the county for a number of years, and we're more than open to do that with the city. So the four, the four areas, and this was in our mission statement, we work primarily in the retention and attraction of businesses and employees. Another way to look at this, another way to slice what we do, is we do economic development work, we do Chamber of Commerce work, we do young professionals work, and we do leadership work, all four of those areas. So just another way of looking at the same process. In terms of the definition of economic development in these kind of four different areas, we're spending most of our time on employee attraction. You've seen the signs around the community, around the county, around the state, around the country, and for that matter, around the world about people needing employees. So we're really trying to do the best we can to draw people's attention from the outside in. We have a lot of great resources here that a lot of organizations work on to provide in terms of entertainment and concerts and, you know, I see Tori here with, what are the bike things?
Tri-Shaws.
Tri-Shaws, yeah, Tri-Shaws, thank you. A lot of great things to attract people here. What we're trying to do is reach out through digital marketing and other means to get people's attention so that they'll consider moving here. Yeah, go ahead and go to the next one. So this is, this is our website, everythingpointshere.com, and you can see in the upper right-hand corner is our companion resource guide that, it's a printed guide that we give to anybody in the community. Some employers mail that to prospective candidates. Hotels put it in their lobbies, businesses put in their lobbies, wherever we can get that information out. There's a number of businesses right now that are putting this website into their job announcements. So I know Delta Dental, UWSP, as a matter of fact, are putting this, and I'm sure there's others, that are using this in their job announcements, so people can go in and see, you can see the six categories: jobs, fun, housing, education, quality of life, and bragging rights. People can get a flavor for the quality of life, not just the business side, but everything that goes on in the community. And as you dig down, eventually, it'll take you to someone else's website. So we're not recreating, you know, the school district's website. You go down to education, you can go down to K-12 education, you can go down to public, and you go down to Stevens Point Schools, and it takes you to their website, and people can dig, whether it's the kids, whether it's a spouse, a partner, whoever it might be. So it's a great resource, and matter of fact, Wausau just spent $250,000 on the economic development plan, and this was one of their ideas, and we've already got it. How about that? Yeah, just a little break. Did you get that on the, yeah, okay. So anyway, that's a little bit about that website. Another tool we're working on, actually, the name is changing. It was called Inspire Central Wisconsin. It's now Zello, because Zello, X-E-L-L-O, bought the business. But this is a database of businesses in our community, and what it does, it connects and links with what the school districts are using, because sixth through 12th graders now have to have an academic and career plan. So the schools work through the students with the academic and career plan, and then if they want to do further research on business, research on businesses in Portage County, they can go into this website. And actually, students in Racine will soon be able to research Portage County, and students in Portage County unfortunately will be able to look for jobs in Racine. But we're trying to open up and the business, and there's no, there's no charge for this right now. We're offering this as a free service through the WDC and some other partners. But it's a great resource. Businesses can put marketing videos on there. They can actually, students can actually link with people in a business and ask questions of them, and we do background checks of all the people in the businesses, but it's a safe, it's a safe way for students to link up with the business community. So again, that whole talent thing, we want to keep those students, K through 12, here. This morning, matter of fact, I was at a couple UWSP classes, talking to them about talent attraction and our desire to keep UWSP students here, Admitt State students here. So a lot of different angles, not only we're reaching out, but we also want to keep those, keep those here, short of, short of building a wall, because we know what that can do politically. Next, I shouldn't, can you erase that? We also do a lot, again, in the business retention and attraction area. There's two different websites, Manufacturing Marketplace and Supply Chain Marketplace, where businesses can go to. There may be a business on the other side of Plover that can help a business, and they didn't even realize it was in town. So again, it's another research-based database where they can look, if they're using a supplier in Kentucky, they can see if there's something more local in Portage County or Central Wisconsin, or at least the state of Wisconsin, rather than working with other entities outside. So we've been working to promote that site as well. You're doing a heck of a job. We also, Tools for Business Success is another tool on our website. No charge to use this. They can go to our portagecounty.biz website, click into here, and again, a lot of information, a lot of resources for business owners, particularly helpful for a smaller business owner who may not have the resources of some of our larger businesses. And when you look at, I think it's 90% of our businesses are 20 employees or less, this is a resource that a lot of businesses can use, and we're trying to get the word out on this. We partner with another firm, and anytime if there's something, like if you go here tonight or tomorrow and you don't see something that you know about, let me know, because I can tell the person who does this for us, you got to get this on our website. And there's sites in there for minorities, for veterans, for women, for entrepreneurs, for trying to find grant funding, a whole bunch of different resources for businesses to use. So trying to help with business retention here, and particularly with entrepreneurial companies. Next one, please. And then we also have our Search Properties site on the Business Council site, again, another free service that we do. It's in partnership with WDC. Here's an example. You can go on there and learn more about the East Park Commerce Center, and if you go to the next one, obviously, the Schofield Group is involved as well with that, but it's another way to get the word out and talk about what we do in the community and the opportunity for development if a business wants to move to Stevens Point and Central Wisconsin. I'm sorry about the picture, but we do, we do. You don't have to laugh that loud, Mike.
Sorry.
We do, we do national and international advertising. Now, a lot of our, this is actually an older one. This is probably a year or two old. A lot of our advertorials are now focusing on talent attraction. So we're trying to figure out as many avenues as we can to get the word out about our community. I mean, we, again, everybody here, well, I shouldn't say everybody. Many people here know about the great resources we have. We need to do more of that here, but we also need to spread it out to try to attract people for our community who want to be in a community like Stevens Point. And there's a lot of people that want to be here. I just had lunch with an executive from Century, and he said, "It's hard getting people who haven't been here to come here, but once they visit for a couple of days, they don't ever want to leave." So we got to get the message out. We got to get people here, because we know what we have is in great shape. We're also been leading the effort on Portage County Prosperity 2040. This has, is not what I think any of us had hoped it would be, but we did have 80 different community leaders together over the course of three evenings to talk about what are the challenges in our community, what are the things we need to work and focus on. The best part has been our core group, which is represented by these folks up here on the slide, have been talking about the roads and transportation issue in our subset of the overall program. So if nothing else comes out of it, we're having some great conversations in regards to roads in our community and looking out 20 years from now. It's hard to believe that next year is 2020, but anyway. Next slide. This is, and I'm not going to go through each of these, so don't freak out, but these are a number of our other programs that we work on. Some are directly related economic development, some are indirectly related economic development, but again, it gets to our young professionals group, our leadership programs, a lot of our partnerships, and a lot of convening different groups together to help meet the our partnerships, and a lot of convening different groups together to help meet the needs of Portage County in terms of economic development. And again, thank you very much for your partnership. I don't know if our questions are...
Typically, we don't do that. If anyone does have questions for Todd Kucan, Todd, how can they get ahold of you?
Well, it's my first initial, well, it's up there, I guess, if you want to leave that up for me.
Okay.
That right there.
I was just, you know, saying that for the people who might be listening on radio and don't have...
Oh, I'm sorry. T as in Todd Kucan, K-U-C-K-K-A-H-N at portagecountybiz, B-I-Z dot com, or 715-344-1940, 344-1940. And if any of you want this, again, just shoot me an email and I can get it to you as well.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate the time.
I'll let you break down, you know how to shut the projectors off?
I'll break it down.
Okay.
Sure.
Yep, and then we'll continue on our merry way. Item number five, I'm sorry, item number six is a consent agenda, and I know that Alder Slawinski has a statement from a constituent that he wants to either read or summarize. Is there anyone who wishes to pull anything from the consent agenda? Okay, we've got a couple, so maybe this will change some minds or add some. So I'll let Alder Slawinski speak to his email. You can either read it or summarize it if you'd like.
All right. I received an email today from former mayor Andrew Helverson regarding the sidewalk continuation program, and basically the subject of his email is sidewalk project opposition. It basically states, "I am not supportive whatsoever of the current approach to the east side sidewalk project. I have always advocated assertively for the addition of sidewalks in this general location to allow for filling of the noticeable gaps within the system. However, the common sense approach that was presented many years back now was that the general city levy would be used to pay for the installation. This was a concession to alleviate at least some of the consternation created by adding sidewalks in the first place. The property owners would still be responsible for ongoing maintenance charges that would be subject to special assessment but not installation for two very important reasons. Number one, the sidewalks weren't there prior, plain and simple. This was not the case for the new subdivision at Jordan and Regent. They were specifically made aware that they were to install sidewalks and pay for them as part of the approved subdivision plat and ultimate construction. Reason two, the public good and concept of the commons should engage, meaning everyone may, who may walk on that sidewalk benefits from the use of it, just like streets. Not just the owner of the real estate directly connected to a sidewalk benefits from that sidewalk. Also, at a minimum, you should eliminate new dual redundant sidewalk areas as much as possible and actively increase the visibility and impact of crosswalks to aid pedestrians to flow safely from sidewalk to sidewalk. Regardless, if said sidewalk would be on the other side of the street. Again, this allows for less impact to the area in general, but still allows for safer travel for pedestrians. This should especially be used for the church who would be affected significantly by the proposed sidewalk on the west side of Woolshire from Simones to Jordan. The entire future continuation project should be eliminated in its entirety unless viewed as an important enough project to be paid by the general city levy. If this is viewed as an important enough project, then it should be paid for by all. If the argument is that there are more important uses of levy dollars, you can make a very clear decision, then don't move forward with it at all." Basically, he had sent me a visual of the map, basically showing where he feels that the, you know, where sidewalks should be eliminated, and he was highlighting the areas where he'd like to see crosswalks in place. He did email it to the mayor as well as Director Badun, so they do have a copy of it.
Okay. So if anybody needs a copy, by all means, contact our offices. President Johnson, you had a comment? Do you want to pull something?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Shall I make a motion to, or do you want all the items pulled?
Well, it looks like Alder Jennings says something she either wants to comment or pull on. Alder Dalton has raised her hand as well.
Okay, I'll just, I'll mention mine then.
Is it a comment, or are you actually wanting to pull something?
I want to, some clarification on the minutes from the airport committee meeting.
Okay. We can do that, let's do that now. And Director Lemke, I'm going to have you come up to the lectern, because it's a question about the airport committee. President Johnson, go ahead.
Thank you. And actually, it was Director Lemke who is noted here, so perfect timing. And if we could have an update on Spirit leaving the airport, I think, number one, for some reason, Alder's got to find out about this in the media, and probably not the best way, kind of like as you were saying earlier, Mr. Mayor, about the emergency management. We can do better in communicating out, particularly in situations where things have changed. So Spirit leaving the airport, I was surprised to hear it on the media not have been told, particularly since we had, of course, had meetings recently about granting them a conditional use and, of course, trying to guide that. So again, I prefer not to find these things out in the media. I would like a better communication system. But Director Lemke, if you could at least give us a little bit of information that you were able to get from them at all on why they're leaving and going to Mozenee.
Well, it's a little bit of why they're not staying, I suppose.
Why they're not staying, how about that?
Yeah, they're resident right now in our community hangar. It's a little more than a year and a half now, I believe. We had a six-month lease agreement with them to do that. Pretty significant increases every six months after that, because it was known by all parties we don't want them there long-term, because that's our only community asset that can house large aircraft for de-icing and other things like that. So we did two renewals. The current lease is up November 30th. Went through the conditional use process, came down to negotiating lease terms, and we don't currently have a commercial lease on the field. We have corporate, a private and corporate. We proposed what we thought was appropriate commercial lease. They didn't like that. So there was some negotiating back and forth. In the end, actually, the numbers we came up with were, to be honest, slightly less than what they had asked for, because we conceded to the fact that some of the green area in the lease that was only for stormwater management, things like that, wasn't all that productive area from a lease perspective. So our numbers in the end ended up a little, a little less than what they had asked for at one point, and beyond that, I have, I don't know. Yeah, I wasn't given any more information either.
Okay.
Yeah.
I appreciate that.
And they just notified us that they chose not to renew the lease. That's where we were. Is that correct?
Yeah, so they, so basically said, "We're no longer seeking land lease. We'll be vacating the airport by November 30th."
Again, this was, I think, significant enough, especially since it was a topic that we did discuss through the conditional use. Not, I'm not saying you needed to, we've just got to figure out how to keep Alder's up to speed on, on significant events, and I think this is probably significant enough.
Fair enough, yeah.
So thank you for the feedback.
Sure, thank you. Alder Jennings?
This is from the Board of Public Works Agenda, page 61, item number four, to accept the ordinance amendments in section 9.05 regarding overnight parking. However, how closely related to the committee agenda item must a motion be? Because I would like to make a motion, however you're not, I didn't think to ask the attorney before we started, so should I just make the motion to...
Adopt the ordinance? Is that what you're looking for?
I need to know how closely related to the committee agenda a motion needs to be, because it's not that.
I guess I would suggest that you ask your motion and get the advice of the city attorney.
Okay. I, and I missed the opportunity to do this in committee, and that's, that was my fault. I would like to make a motion to direct staff from Community Development, PD, Public Works, and the Comptroller Treasurer to explore options and possible integration of a parking authority. And this is something I did discuss with Michael Ostrowski before he left, so this was actually a recommendation that he helped me with, but that's the motion I would like to make, if I can make that motion.
So staff can certainly undertake that task without any action of the council. But with regards to whether a motion of that type would be in order right at this point, I think considering that what's, what's on there is action on an ordinance, I think those things are kind of dissimilar. So, I mean, certainly, the staffs here, we just heard you ask that, it's something that we can explore and put together some materials for a later agenda item without the council in, you know, taking any sort of action to direct staff to do that. So oddly, yes, we can accommodate your request, but no, you're, I don't think your motion actually would be in order. It's a little strange, but I think really, when it comes to ordinances, the only types of motions that would really be in order would be to either bring that specific ordinance up for a vote in its form that it, that it was placed on the committee agenda, or to bring it up for a vote or a discussion in some sort of amended version.
So yes, Alder, what I, what I can tell you is that staff will work on that, and we will bring something forward at the November meeting and put it on the agenda for November for discussion. I imagine we'll have some framework already at that point. Okay?
No, I, anyway, that's fine.
Alder Dalton, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I'd like to separate out for consideration from Public Works, the proposed limits of the 2020 sidewalk construction project, and then at the end of the list, the mayoral appointment to the redevelopment authority.
Okay. We would be looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda with those two items pulled for further discussion. Alder Slawinski?
So move.
You have a second? Second by Alder Dalton. Discussion on the non, or I'm sorry, the consent agenda. Hearing non-clerk, would you please call that role?
Morrow.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Dugan.
Aye.
Niebohn.
Aye.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Ann Jennings.
Aye.
Okay. I'm sorry, what was the count on that?
Ten zero.
Ten zero. That is approved. Going back to the minutes and actions of the Public Works Committee, in the proposed limits of the 2020 sidewalk continuation project, Alder Dalton, you have the floor.
Yeah, I think there was a pretty robust discussion at the committee level about this, but I think that the, it did warrant a separate vote from this body as a whole. And I think that just from that discussion there, it seemed like that there, like from hearing from Director Badun, that there wasn't, you know, changes to the 2020 project would possibly have an impact, but it could, it would depend on what they are, and that eliminating certain portions would probably not have a substantial impact on that. So I guess I would like to make a motion that the Public Works Department reprioritize the sidewalks north of Jordan Lane.
Okay, and is that a second by Slawinski? Okay, when you say reprioritize, what does that mean exactly?
The portions that were articulated north of Jordan from Simones to Jordan be pushed off to a later date.
Okay. So the motion is to take this 2020 sidewalk continuation project as outlined in our Board of Public Works packet and eliminate the sidewalk continuation project north of Jordan for this year. Does that sound reasonable, Alder Dalton?
Yeah. I might change my mind about what I want the count in, but that sounds reasonable for discussion.
Okay. So the motion is to remove those sidewalks, the proposed sidewalks, north of Jordan for 2020. Is that acceptable to the second, Alder?
Can I?
Yeah, absolutely.
I guess I'd like to just provide input. I would not like to remove them, but I guess reposition, you know, reconsider, because during the discussion last Monday, I had suggested maybe moving those sidewalks from the, where she had stated, and move them closer to, move that project closer to Washington School to provide, you know, sidewalks for, you know, closer to the school.
Okay, so are you removing your second?
Well, I guess maybe an amendment, a friendly amendment to her motion.
We're going to get confused here. All right. So your amendment is what?
Well, to, instead of removing and not doing anything with those, that planned, I guess, what do you want to call it, lineal footage, or, you know, that we were planning on installing sidewalks, take that portion and redirect it to the areas around Washington School.
When you say the areas around Washington School...
That were highlighted in that, there was a printout that were, that were for future locations.
Okay.
I think they were dashed yellow lines, if I recall.
Yep, okay.
Basically, moving them up.
I accept the redefinition of reprioritize.
All right. So let me, let me just make sure I understand it. So the motion is to amend the 2020 sidewalk continuation plan to remove sidewalks north of Jordan from the 2020 option and reallocate those dollars to sidewalk continuation in the area of Washington School as future plans outlined?
I can probably give you more...
Does that sound about right? Because I don't have the map in front of me right now. Director Badun, can I have you?
Basically, on Woolshire Boulevard, running along the east side of Woolshire.
East side.
Okay, so it would reallocate the sidewalks north of Jordan to the east side of Woolshire.
Up from Price to Jordan.
Okay. Does that sound like everybody understands that? Would have been easier if we would have known about this ahead of time. We could have had a map. President Johnson?
Maps would have been really wonderful, thankfully. Alder Zarazua has one, and I'm looking at it, but I'm wondering, again, the visual for everybody in the room would have been helpful. How do, what's the prioritization system? Because if, so now I'm wondering, you know, we're going to move it over east of Woolshire, and at the next meeting, the people who live on Simones and Price and whatever other streets are in there...
This, this is rather unorthodox. So I will let the director speak to this, but here's what we have. So when we do the sidewalk continuation project, as directed by this body, we choose a segment of the city. It's easier to bid on a chunk for those contractors, rather than moving it here and moving it over there, okay, I want this road over here and that road over there. So that chunk was chosen this year, for 2020. If we move some of those down to Woolshire, for example, next year, we will very likely come to you with a proposal to say, "Do this chunk..."
Right.
"...and the chunk we didn't get done in 2020 north of Jordan." But more importantly, nobody in that area has a reasonable assumption that we were going to be talking about this at this meeting.
Yeah.
So you're going to have all of those people on the east side of Woolshire, for example, who thought that, okay, it passed committee, so we don't have to worry about it. Now they are going to be, if this passes, blindsided by a motion to change it and reallocate their sidewalks now in front of their house, when they arguably didn't have a reasonable assumption that we were even going to be talking about it. Director Badun, do you have anything you want to add?
I think the question was related to the priorities, and as far as that goes, kind of within the series, I think I mentioned last week that there were some issues related to some of the existing swales and some of the other roads to the east side of Woolshire. So this approach kind of goes along with, you know, what was the safe route to school related to that half-mile radius surrounding the schools, all of which falls within that area. And to try to fill in some of the other gaps that we have identified there, including those created by the new sidewalks there at St. Paul and Dearborn and Regent, just to try to fill those in. The approach was to try to get as much coverage as we could in a reasonable-sized project that we could complete in a year, that would give us good, you know, bidding in the spring, which then brought us to the one side of the street kind of throughout.
Okay. President Johnson, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Director Badun. I think my discomfort with the motion is, just as you stated, all those people who live on Roberts and Simones and Price, and of course, Jordan then to the east, my, I suspect they would show up with the same sort of passionate stories, and we should probably hear from them as well, or give them their day. So that's my discomfort with this, is that they're not here, and they were not given fair notice, so.
Thank you. Good, Alder Dugan, then Alder Shore.
Yes, I'm dismayed. I'm the alder here, and I know most of the people in this area. So I'm a bit hurt that two other Alders have taken this over. And I want to tell you that swales and sidewalks, as I've said before, are the biggest bones of contention in that area. However, I have a list of how many people who have called or emailed or talked to me on the street about not liking sidewalks or swales, and how many who have said, "Please get me one." I want those people to show up, too. I don't want us to make decisions with people who don't live in that area, don't know those people, and the other people don't have any idea what we're doing here. This is really a bit crazy. We had three people, and really, it was just one, two, who have been talking to me ad nauseam about not wanting sidewalks down there on Regent and Indiana. And they're the ones that came, and came, and came, and came, and have been besieging me. I said, "I have voted as long as I've been on the council, and I've also lobbied for sidewalks before that." I said, "It's happening. It's one of the best things that I think the council has done." But I defer, I defer to Public Works Director and actually the Utilities Director as well as to where those sidewalks and swales go in. They know the best. It's hard on Roberts and Lorraine, those people, some of them were very unhappy with the swales that went in there. But a few understood. Once, I have, I don't know how many emails I've had to send out explaining, "This is the reason." Lots and lots and lots of explanation. And some people don't even need that, they understand already. I don't like, you know, what I thought was my, you know, what I've been treating as my lawn, to get a basin in it, but I understand that it's important, and maybe more now than ever with the stormwater.
Thank you, Alder.
But I guess I want, I want us to have a discussion of this involving everybody. And I, again, say I think it's very important for the Alders to defer to their constituents, the ones that they talk to regularly, and defer to the Public Works the ones that they talk to regularly, and defer to the Public Works Director in this instance and the Utility Director. They know best. And I got together with Public Works Director Badun, as he's said before, about where these should go. And I know where people walk there. I know how they get to school there. I know when they go for walks and when they drive. And we've got lots of driving as well as lots of walking and biking. But I defer to them because they know all kinds of things about what they can construct and what works and what doesn't.
Thank you.
So they're the ones that I want to listen to.
Okay. Alder Shore? Did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I did. Thank you, Mayor. So some of the background here. Alder Dugan and I, hours, the issue's been around for a long time.
Yeah.
But it wasn't until last year that some of the gap filling or the sidewalk continuation started taking place. And it was in our two districts, in mine particularly, on Minnesota and Lindbergh. I'm afraid I have to disagree with the former mayor in terms of this being put on sort of the citywide, because that would be changing the rules very late in the game. The sidewalks that are in front of properties all over the city were paid for by the property owners. So I can't quite go along with that. I understand that there's an impact on the Methodist Church, on St. Paul's, but as we discussed the other night, there is financing to be able to spread that out over time. I don't, in line with what I was saying a moment ago about this not being done for a long time and then finally starting, I don't have quite the same attitude about deferring to staff on this. I think it probably has to be a political decision because of the reason that we're seeing, how much discussion it provokes. So I remember very clearly, one of the toughest votes that I can remember taking in these last few years was about a sidewalk continuation, or I'm sorry, a requirement for a sidewalk of a new development on Green. And the point that I want to make is, we talk about this, about wanting to do this throughout town, and I think over time we do, but my sense of what it means to say we want to do this over time is not that we're doing this all over time, all over town as quickly as possible, that we are doing it in the places that are denser. We're talking about the school because of getting to and from school in particular. So I look at this and I can see that once you get to the north of Jordan, I can see why there might be less need. I don't feel the same way about the north side of Jordan Lane itself, but I can see the point kind of getting back into those areas. So I didn't know how I was going to vote until the very last minute on the last time we had a tough call with regard to Green. I definitely, I do want to see most of this take place. And I think that when we discuss it being large enough to get a decent price, my understanding is that it's not going to, if you shaved some of this off, we're not going to run into the trouble of the price going up significantly. It just needs to be big enough and still probably will be big enough if we made some adjustments.
I would defer that to the Director of Public Works. He would have the best idea on what shaving would or would not do to any potential bidders, but we'll wait to have him talk about that because there were a few other people that wanted to speak. And we'll go with Alder Morrow. Alder Slawinski had his hand up earlier, but we'll go through everybody a first time before we allow alders a second. So Alder Morrow, then Alder Niebohn, then Alder Jennings.
I agree with Alder, Melissa Johnson, and the mayor on this because I think if we either do it, we do it; if we don't, we don't. Because if we do change where...
Alder Morrow, can I have you move the microphone just a little bit closer? I know it picks it up for the audio, but it's hard to hear you without it.
I agree with the mayor and with what Alder Melissa Johnson said as well. I think if we do it, we do it; if we don't, I don't think that we should. Because if we switch things around, the people who are going to be affected, as the mayor said, they're going to get a bill, they're going to get a notice, and it's going to be like a bait and switch. And I don't think that's the way that the council should really proceed to do things. If we're going to do it, we do it. Because if we switch things around here or there, shave this, shave that, someone else is going, someone else is going to get cut and someone else is going to get billed. And they're not going to be happy at the last minute finding out that they're going to be assessed so much, so much, so much money.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. Sir, we're going to let the city attorney jump in.
Just a quick note. With regards to special assessments for sidewalks or anything else, there is a separate process that we've all seen from time to time that would still have to be undertaken. So the approval of this as a capital project for next year is not a sufficient action to approve those special assessments. Those will have to be done separately with a preliminary and then a final resolution, notice provided to the property owners, et cetera. So most people probably realize that, but just for anybody watching, wanted to put that out there.
Thank you. Alder Niebohn?
Fortunately, I do have a copy of the map. Snagged it from Alder Dugan here. The problem I have with the amendment, I could, I think there's a way, on Jordan Lane, on the north side, there exists sidewalk north-south on Dearborn and St. Paul. I think we should connect that square. That's part that's anticipated. And then rather than do the block from Summers to Indiana, flip that north-south to the east side of Summers. And then you complete and complete that block as well. So you've completed two blocks of sidewalk. You've done almost the same amount of work. And if you wanted to do a little more east-west, you could do that over on the other side of the, is that the park there?
No, that's the church.
Oh, that's the church.
That's like a church.
Oh, okay. And you could avoid assessing the church for the south side of Jordan Lane there. They'd catch the parsonage, but at least you would fill in those gaps. I could see doing something like that and then avoiding that block, that last block over to Indiana from Summers, Jordan, Summers, and Regent, because you would have completed the inner two blocks and some more around the school. So that...
Thank you, Alder. Yeah, it's very difficult to visualize this for those of us who don't have maps. Again, had we known something like this was going to come up, we could have prepared better. And while it's not necessary, it is a very good courtesy to talk to the department heads or the people involved if you know that something is going to come up. Alder Jennings?
Well, I was just going to express my discomfort at, you know, once again, micromanaging Public Works without engaging Public Works and the lack of public notification.
Thank you. Any alders want to speak for the first time?
For the next year.
Alder Zerizua?
I don't have anything new to add, but I agree just the part of like these homeowners who don't know that we're discussing this. I can't imagine sitting at home later and realizing, you know, that we maybe just flipped the map and made a different decision there. And then I just feel a little uncomfortable with trying to, I understand the church and their concerns about if they're assessed this amount, but I think for individual homeowners, that's an issue, too. I mean, a church has a pool of money from people and an individual doesn't. So I guess it makes me uncomfortable to think we might like work harder to not have the church be assessed when, are we looking at what is needed for sidewalks in this area or what works for individuals?
Thank you. Alder Slawinski?
I guess I just want to comment based on what the alder had just said is, you know, let's put these where they make the most sense. I'm not advocating for one person versus another. I'm trying to put our investment where it's needed. And I said it last Monday night, I just don't agree with what, you know, the proposal of going on the north of Jordan. And another comment I'd like to make is, there's concern that we're going in there and changing what was initially, or what was presented last Monday, but yet the individual that came to us last Monday with her argument, we wouldn't change that from her, but that was okay. She basically stating here that the maps had been changed, the maps that were presented at the August meeting and wanted questions answered, writing, who made the changes, how the changes were made, and who determines these decisions. So again, we made changes to that individual and there was no concern. But now all of a sudden, now we don't want to make changes because we're concerned about somebody on Wilshire. It doesn't make sense to me.
Okay.
I guess maybe somebody can explain that to me.
Okay. I can take a stab at it. Alder Dugan, you have something to add?
Alder Badun and I, Alder, Director Badun and I talked more than once about this. And when that one particular constituent would say, why don't you tell us? It's not, you know, you haven't told us where these are going to go, or they went there and now they're going here. And I tried to explain to her, as the director explained to me, he hadn't got it solid yet. He was still planning it for all the reasons that he's talked about and he would probably do again if we asked him to. He didn't have it. Maybe what was presented in August was the beginning. You know, he was just beginning to work it out.
Okay. Director Badun?
I think we need to just defer to him.
Can you explain the, how the map was presented this past month? I know that, you know, we had talked about it a couple of times and this would offer now two meetings for constituents to come in and voice their concerns based on the map that was presented and ultimately approved by the committee. Changing it tonight doesn't afford them that opportunity. There are no other meetings after this, for that map.
Because the first one, if everyone remembers, was just part of the director's report. At that point in time, I was just trying to share where we kind of were at there with a little bit of progress to visualize, much like we're struggling today is to everyone get their hands around this. So the idea is put together a map to show where we were and present that as part of the director's report in an ongoing project. Then it seemed to be creating some already uproar and I thought was a good idea when Alder Dugan had asked about, just based on the feedback she was getting, to send out some notices to people in the area that may be impacted. And we were still updating, so we then took the time to finalize as we were working on the map, along with potential future projects, and then send out to all of those residents in the area, whether they would be part of the 2020 project or 2021, to say that there is this project, as well as it was going to be on that Board of Public Works to discuss. So I think at that time was really the idea that it was potentially finalized and notices were sent to people to give anyone an opportunity to comment at that time.
Thank you. And something else to point out, the people on Wilshire, for example...
They're going to be the same.
Saw that the committee approved the plan as laid out and they weren't on it. So they were okay. Had we known about this, that someone was going to propose another change, we could have sent notices to the people on Wilshire so they could have the opportunity to appear at this meeting. Right now, it's on the fly. They don't even have the opportunity to appear.
That's right.
And that should make you very nervous. Alder Shore, and then we'll go back to Alder Slawinski very briefly, and then we're going to call for a vote.
Thank you, Mayor. I do agree that we can't add, and I wouldn't support that. I wouldn't support, and I suppose that was the sort of second amended amendment proposed that, you know, I guess was about shifting focus to the east. I definitely see a problem with that. You know, we can't now add new pieces and say those properties which we haven't discussed will get sidewalks. So that's on that point. I guess when it comes down to it, I do understand the logic of what's here. As Director Badun explained last week, this is a plan that puts sidewalk on at least one side.
Right.
So if it comes down to a vote between the whole plan and not at all approving it, I will support it. I guess what I was interested in was the idea of taking off the pieces to the north of Jordan Lane. That is something that, where I can see the argument for it and would be inclined to support that. But if there's not enough support for that change and it's either all or nothing, I'll support all.
Thank you. Alder Slawinski, real briefly, then we'll go to Alder Dugan.
I would defer to the Alder Dalton. I don't know if she's going to...
Alder Dalton, I'm sorry. I said Dugan.
Can I make a motion or amendment to my motion?
Technically, no. We have a motion on the floor and a second, we should vote on that.
Can I entertain an amendment to the emotion on the floor then?
I suppose that would be in order.
Which would be to leave the emotion at removing the sidewalks north of Jordan Lane from the 2020 project and then nix the language about reprioritizing to other areas.
Probably unorthodox. And Dugan, if we're getting out of the gray area into one way or the other, let me know. But, so the motion on the floor would then be, is that acceptable to the second? The motion on the floor would be to remove the sidewalks north of Jordan from the 2020 continuation program. That implies that we could be very well back here next year talking about the 2021 continuation program, of which we'll probably have the same people complaining because it will very likely be presented to you in 2021. Is that the motion? Director, I would like you to speak on how that might change the bid environment.
As far as that goes, I do think we would see an increase in the unit pricing for that. I think it's still a suitable-sized project, though, to get good pricing. I don't think we're going to see as good, but I think it's still a suitable-sized project.
Okay, so in your opinion, by removing this, we would likely pay more for the per-unit price, but it wouldn't be significantly more?
Correct. That's my opinion.
Okay. All right. So if you are in favor of the motion to remove the sidewalks north of Jordan from the 2020 continuation project, you will vote yes. If you are opposed to that change, you will vote no, and the clerk will please call the roll.
Jennings?
No.
Shore?
Aye.
Zerizua?
Aye.
Johnson?
No.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Niebohn?
No.
Dugan?
No.
Dalton?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Morrow?
No.
Five to five.
Five to five? It is a tie. I get to cast the deciding vote if I choose to do so, and I will vote no. However, that puts us in another position, because we still don't have an approval for the 2020 sidewalk continuation project. So we would need a motion to approve the project as presented. Motion by President Johnson, second by alderperson Morrow. Any ad nauseam discussion? If you are in favor of approving the project as presented, you will vote yes. If you are opposed, you will vote no, and the clerk will call that roll.
Aye.
Phillips?
No.
Dalton?
No.
Dugan?
Yes.
Niebone?
Yes.
Slawinski?
No.
Johnson?
Aye.
Zarazua?
Aye.
Aye.
Jennings?
Aye.
Broke the tie.
Seven to three approved.
Seven to three approved. The next item that was pulled is the consideration for the redevelopment authority appointment of Dave Lattick to fulfill the unexpired term of Jerome Segura expiring December 31st of 2021. Alder Dalton, you have the floor.
My first question, Mr. Mayor, was, is, was there any other applicants for this position? Because my understanding was.
Yes, there were two.
Okay. Yeah, I won't be supporting this appointment, just because on the grounds of this individual does have community leadership and probably necessary expertise, but I feel that there is some conflict of interest potentially with his role on the county board and as we look out to the future redevelopments. As well, I think that consolidating power into individuals in our community who already have leadership doesn't do much for the future leadership and understanding and citizen participation, so I will not be supporting this appointment.
What are your wishes? The recommendation before you is to appoint Dave Lattick to fill the unexpired term of Jerome Segura on the redevelopment authority.
One question.
President Johnson?
I think I may know who the other person is.
There were two.
The other two. And one of them is actually my county board district, and I think he's in District Three for the city council, lives in the inner part of the city and lives in an area we're focusing on redevelopment. So I was a little disappointed that he did not rise to the top because he should, because he is an outstanding human, and I'm not going to say his name, but he's just really an outstanding human and a great, great contributor to our community.
We are very fortunate on many occasions to have several well-qualified candidates. On the other hand, some of the things go uneven applied for, for a series of months. But we are fortunate to have some very good candidates, and I chose Mr. Lattick because of his expertise, as Alder Dalton had said, in business and understanding what redevelopment really means. Alder Morrow?
Make a motion to approve David Lattick to the redevelopment authority.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Seconded by Phillips. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Jennings?
No.
Aye.
Zarazua?
Aye.
Johnson?
No.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Niebone?
No.
Dugan?
Aye.
Dalton?
No.
Phillips?
Aye.
Morrow?
Aye.
Six-four passes.
Six-four, the motion is approved. Item number seven is on page 80 of your packet, and that is a resolution supporting H.R. Bill 763 for the Energy, Innovation, and Carbon Dividend Act. We have two speakers. We will start with Dan Dietrich. Mr. Dietrich, you will have three minutes.
My name is Dan Dietrich. I live at 1490 Evergreen Drive. That's in Stevens Point Postal District, but I'm in the town of Hall. First of all, I want to thank you for passing an earlier resolution dealing with carbon fee and dividend. I am sure I'm not the only one here who is concerned about the problems we in Wisconsin are facing regarding climate change. The purpose of the bill that's before you, or the resolution that's before you, is to support a bill that creates a healthier, more stable, more prosperous nation by driving down Americans' carbon pollution and unleashing American technology, innovation, and ingenuity. The projected benefits are it reduces U.S. carbon emissions by at least 40% in the first 12 years and by 90% by 2050. That's the first one. The second one is that it improves Americans' health and saves projected 295,000 lives through 2030 through better air quality. There are other health benefits as well, dealing with vector-borne diseases and deaths from flooding, et cetera, et cetera, but 295 through better air quality. Third, it deploys private capital and American innovation to advance clean energy technologies, and it spurs economic growth in local communities such as ours. It's simple, it's effective, and it puts money into people's pockets each month to spend as they wish in their local communities. Finally, fourth item here is that it creates 2.1 million net new jobs over the next 10 If this bill were to pass and be signed into law, it would not be a magic bullet. It would not solve all our problems and we wouldn't have roses coming out of our ears. But it is the biggest and the best step we in America can take to deal with the ongoing climate crisis. I thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Pat Dries.
Pat Dries, 432 West Trillium Court, Stevens Point. And nearly all scientists are saying that we need to take action and take action very soon on climate change. Nearly all economists are saying that the best way to do that is to put a price on carbon. Over 3,000 economists, including some Nobel laureates, who recently sent a letter, signed the letter, saying that carbon fee and dividend, returning the money to the people, is the best way to combat climate change. A study was done, as Dan just alluded to, saying that it will create jobs. Carbon fee and dividend is best implemented on the national level. It's much more difficult for a city or even a state to do so. Because of all of this, the city of Stevens Point previously passed a resolution supporting the concept of carbon fee and dividend. What has changed since then is we now have a bill in the U.S. House of Representatives that has over 60 cosponsors. That is H.R. 763. So I urge you to pass this resolution and send the message to Ron Kind, Ron Johnson, and Tammy Baldwin that the city of Stevens Point supports H.R. 763. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alderpersons? President Johnson?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Go to the second, Dalton. Discussion. Alder Shore?
Thank you, Mayor. What I say here will be an echo of some of the comments that I made the last time, and I should start by saying that I do appreciate and respect and admire the work that Dan Dietrich and Citizens Climate Lobby do. Where this, where this resolution trips me up and where this proposal trips me up is in the area of beliefs about how change happens. It probably is accurate to call this proposal the best, and maybe one way of stating my position is that I do believe that the best can sometimes be the enemy of the good. It's, I feel like it's a proposal that's been developed at a level of detail and with predictions that are disconnected from the kind of political realities of what the country's ready to do, what the political process would produce. As I said the previous time this came up, it's, there's a reason that the climate action that's taken place has all been in the nature of regulation rather than market-based pricing of carbon, because whether it's a cap and trade system or whether it's a pricing mechanism like the fee and dividend, it's a huge ask, it's a huge amount of change for the system to digest all at once. I do very much believe that there are things that we can do here at the local level. The mayor and I have been working on developing a new system for closely tracking the city government's own fossil fuel use with a view towards really keeping a much closer eye on the trend lines there. And as I said in a recent meeting, an important area in which we can take action and should, and I hope will, is accelerating the planting of trees here in our tree city, because there are studies that show that if you raise the percentage of paved surfaces that are shaded by deciduous trees, you get a significant cooling benefit. So I hope we'll do that. But anyway, so that's, those are my reasons for voting against the resolution.
Thank you, Alder. If you are in favor of the motion, you will vote yes. If you are opposed, vote no, and the clerk will please call the roll.
Jennings?
Aye.
Shore?
No.
Zarazua?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Slawinski?
No.
Niebone?
Aye.
Dugan?
Yes.
Dalton?
Aye.
Phillips?
No.
Morrow?
No.
Six-four adopted.
Six-four adopted. Item number eight is a resolution authorizing and providing for the issuance of $4.95 million of general obligation promissory note, Series 2019A, and all related details, page 81 of your packet. Comptroller, do you have anything to add?
No, this is what we discussed at finance, so nothing was changed. We're borrowing $4.95 million at an interest rate of 1.99%.
Mosher, I'm sorry. Alder Phillips?
I'd like to move approval of borrowing.
Thank you. Seconded by Dugan.
Without a comment?
As succinctly as possible, please.
Yes. We have learned the outline for this, but I'm wondering if comptroller treasurer, Lattick, might tell the public who's listening or watching a little bit about why this and how it benefits us.
I would defer to either the comptroller or? Anyone can watch the meeting online at our website, StevensPoint.com. We talked about it quite a bit at the committee meetings, so maybe it'd be best if we just defer to that. Comptroller, anything to add?
Well, if you just wanted a 30-second explanation, this is the borrowing for the 2019 capital projects, and basically, most of that money has already been spent. This borrowing was to reimburse for those projects, most notably, street projects such as the North Side project that you saw going on all summer, and also the Reserve Street project, as well as other, you know, fleet and vehicle equipment needs.
The details can all be found on our website, if anybody wants them. Any other comments? If you are in favor, vote yes. If opposed, vote no, and the clerk will call the roll.
Morrow?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Dugan?
Aye.
Niebone?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Zarazua?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Ann Jennings?
Aye.
Ten-zero.
Ten-zero, that's adopted. Item number nine is on page 98, and that's an ordinance amendment for Chapter 3 with officials, boards, and employees, Section 3.39, salary for the joint municipal court judge for the elected term of 2020 through 2023. The joint oversight board met, proposed this. It had already been approved unanimously by the Plover Town Board. It's up to your village board, rather, it's up to our consideration. President Johnson?
Motion to approve as presented.
Thank you. Seconded by alderperson Morrow. Discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Jennings?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Zarazua?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Niebone?
Aye.
Dugan?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Phillips?
No.
Ann Morrow?
Aye.
Nine-one passes.
Nine-one, that passes. Item number 10 is on page 99 of your packet. That's an ordinance amendment for Chapter 23 zoning regarding Section 23.01/14 pertaining to driveway and parking requirements. We had talked about this at client commission. What are your wishes? President Johnson?
Thank you.
Mid-swallow?
I, yep, it kind of was going to go down the wrong way, so, motion to approve as presented.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Seconded by alderperson Shore. Discussion there. Alder Dugan?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with 1, 2, 3, 4 items of this, but I just can't in good conscience vote yes for this particular ordinance because of number five, where a vehicle, where we would allow people to put even more concrete or.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other comments? Alder Dalton?
I will also not be supporting this ordinance amendment. I think it's a premature to some of the other discussions we're having about parking and where residents put their cars. So maybe at a later date, I would have approved some form of this.
Thank you. Anyone else? You're in favor of the motion, you'll vote yes. If opposed, vote no, and the clerk will call the roll.
Morrow?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Dalton?
No.
Dugan?
No.
Niebone?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Zarazua?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Jennings?
No.
Seven-three.
Seven-three, the motion is adopted and the ordinance is approved. Item number 11 on page 100 of your packet is an ordinance amendment, several ordinance amendments pertaining to traffic and Section 9.05 of parking. Again, this is just cleaning up some of the things that we've had as we discussed at the committees. President Johnson?
Sure.
Well, I don't know what's that. Okay.
Well, it was just, you know, stretch, stretch, it's growing long this evening, sorry. Motion to approve as presented.
Thank you. Seconded by alderperson Niebone. Discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Jennings?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Zarazua?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Niebone?
Aye.
Dugan?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Morrow?
Aye.
Ten-zero.
Ten-zero, that is adopted. Item number 12 is on page 103, and that's a resolution for a budget amendment related to EMS and IT budgets and various revenues. Again, we talked about these at committee. Comptroller, anything to add?
Nothing to add since committees, so just available for any questions.
What are your wishes? Alder Phillips?
Move approval of those budgets.
Thank you. Seconded by alderperson Morrow. Discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Morrow?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Dugan?
Aye.
Niebone?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Zarazua?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Jennings?
Aye.
Ten-zero adopted.
Ten-zero, that is adopted. Item number 13 is on page 104 of your packet, and that's consideration of the 2020 capital budget and capital plan for 2021 through 2024. President Johnson?
Motion to approve the capital plan for 2020 through 2024.
Thank you. Is there a second? Seconded by alderperson Morrow.